Please be advised that Councilman Rector will not be in attendance and has been excused. We do have several items on the agenda for this afternoon. Our first one is an overview of the City of Suffolk Commercial Drivers License Training Program. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This afternoon, you do have two presentations, which will be provided by the Department of Public Works. There will be, they are or will be addressing the shortage of CDL certified drivers, and the second presentation will be the maintenance of the city's roadside ditches in a proactive manner. At this time, I would like to invite the Assistant Director of Public Works, Carl Marshall, to the podium to provide the CDL presentation. Carl?
Good afternoon, Most Honorable Mayor, Most Honorable Vice Mayor Ward, Most Honorable City Manager, and Most Honorable City Council. My name is Carl Marshall, and I'm Assistant Director of Public Works Operations. It's my privilege to present to you today an overview of the program that I'm probably the most proud of in my tenure as Assistant Director here as the City of Suffolk. It's our commercial drivers training program. I ask that you bear with me, because while I'm a bivocational pastor, my public speaking is not done extemporaneously. So bear with me as I lean to my notes for this presentation. Can we have the next slide, please? So, this is a list of our positions. Went too far. The second slide. This is a list of our positions that Public Works and other departments as well have, and our daily operations that require, okay, I got you, that require a commercial driver's license. There are street maintenance worker ones and twos, heavy equipment operators, senior heavy equipment operators, a paint technician and a sign technician, the highway equipment operator and the sign mechanic. The last five positions require that you have a Class A CDL period. These guys, these positions get 90 days to acquire these licenses. So in the past, the process of acquiring a CDL was pretty simple. You had to pass a written test at the DMV, get your learner's permit, you will learn the pre-trip inspection, gave you some driving time, and would schedule you to go to the DMV. And most of the time, we would use the last person, the last person that got their license, to teach the incoming person, because it would be fresh in their minds. In addition, on days like today, stormy days, bad weather days, we were making all-out effort to train those employees who were seeking their CDLs. However, in February of 2022, the federal government came along and added a level of training that made it a little more difficult to get a commercial driver's license. And this is what they said. They said, "Drivers applying for a Class A or a Class B CDL for the first time, who are issued a CLP, a commercial learner's permit, on or after February 22nd, February 7, 2022, must complete entry-level driver training with a registered training provider prior to testing." So, what do we do as a city, and how do we handle this? Public Works Leadership, we sought out an ELDT training registered provider, and it was difficult, it was difficult to find, but we found one. We found one, and we entered into agreement without a contract. We did not have a contract with them, but we did enter into an agreement to train our employees. As it is with anything, when you enter into an agreement with an outside contractor, there will be obstacles. And here are some of the obstacles that we faced. It was $1,500 per employee, per employee. There was a waiting list for employees to be accepted, and the classes were larger. Employees spent sometimes an entire week at CDL training, limiting the time that they had on their jobs. And a lot of times, it was new employees, when we should be training them on their jobs, they had to be down at CDL training. Pardon me. And there were longer waits to get behind-the-wheel training. And the most depressing thing, the most depressing fact was that we were sending employees to school all week, and they would hardly ever get any training on the job that we hired them for, because they would be at school. So, after taking the bumps and knocks to come with working with an outside contractor whose sole objective is to make money, we became innovative and found out what it took to become our own training facility. We visited other cities, and we found out there's only, unless it has happened since we started, there's only one other city that is a registered training facility. We discussed the process with other training schools, and finally, in April 2023, after all the talking, writing, meeting, discussing, we were finally able to put the necessary pieces together to become a Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration accredited training provider. Well, what does that mean to you all? It means that we are recognized and allowed by the federal government to train our own employees. We no longer have to find a school, because we are a school. We can't license them, but we can train them and prepare them to go to the DMV. If you were to do a Google search for a CDL training location, you will find our school. This is what you will find. We're listed in their directory, and this slide shows what you'll find at the end of that search. So, the program is broken down into three sections. The first part is theory. Then you have range, which is when we teach the pre-trip. And the pre-trip is when you check all the functions of the vehicle before you ever get to actually drive. We check everything from the hoses, to the tires, to the brakes, brake chambers. The pre-trip is an extensive check. As a matter of fact, in our curriculum, in our curriculum, the one that we teach, there are over 130 items that each student must learn for their pre-trip inspection. Then we have the classroom section. That's the theory portion. The theory entails eight hours of classroom instruction for each employee, focusing on preparing them to successfully pass the written test that's required to acquire a CDL learner's permit. Then you have the range portion. The range portion, range and driving portion of our program requires 80 hours of driving time. Now, here's the key. Here's the key. When we were working with a contractor, our employees had to stand in line some days. That's all they did, was stand there, watching other people and other employees, waiting for their turn. But in our program, which happens on Fridays and Saturdays, with a much smaller class, usually sometimes no more than four employees, each person, every week, gets an opportunity to operate a vehicle in some way or another, every single time they come to class. We have what I like to call a fascinating success rate. We've had 13 students to successfully complete the training through our school. Now, let's just be fair about it, and let's be honest about it. I must say that we've had a few who were unsuccessful. But what we found out is that some people get testing anxiety, and some people learn differently than others. But we're working to try to accommodate all where this is concerned. In addition to training public work roadways, traffic, and refuse, we've had employees from our fleet maintenance department to be successful, and currently, we have one employee from Parks and Recreation in our program. This program is really, really beneficial to the city. So, we can all see the financial upside to the city. However, there is an unperceived-by-sight benefit that this program brings, and that is the pride that an employee feels when they feel like their job offers them opportunities and ways to grow. Our Public Works leadership, we've noticed that our team is appreciative, which makes them more diligent, more loyal, and they feel appreciated as employees when we offer them something that will increase them as an employee. And I close this afternoon by introducing you to the team that manages this program. When I call y'all, if you don't mind standing up, D'Angelo Askew. D'Angelo is the person that communicates with the other department managers and supervisors and schedules the classes. We have Mr. Robert Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, he teaches the theory portion of the class. I have with me Mr. Richard Griffin. He teaches the range and the road driving. And I have Ms. Cynthia Cale. She takes care of all our clerical work and making sure that we have things in order if the program is ever audited. She put together a book. We keep all of our employees, everything they go to. We track their hours. Cynthia keeps up with all of that for us. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marshall. Council questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
I just want to thank you for having the fortitude to come and bring that program to the city, because it's tough to get that Class A.
Yes, it is.
The B is somewhat, but the A is the tough one. I know I've had a Class A since probably in the 70s, and I've kept it, just because I didn't want to lose it, because I knew it would be difficult to get back. But what's great about this is the way you presented it to us today about what the rewarding part of this is to the employees, when they know that they've accomplished something, and of course, the city's behind them. And I can't tell you, that's a great program. I wish you many more successes, and I hope many more people will take advantage of it and go through it. So I want to thank you and all the folks that were involved for doing such a great job with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
And Carl, I want to thank you too, and thank the department for what they're doing. Just the other day, I saw where other municipalities are struggling to get certified drivers. Is this allowing us to offer that benefit to people that are coming into workforce, so that we don't have the problem getting people like they are?
Yes, sir. When we bring them in, we let them know. We start them at our lowest level, and if they come in and make it through our probationary period, we can get them in our CDL school and get them trained up to accept a higher-paying job.
All right. And we do it mainly just for our people. We don't bring any
Just our people.
Inside people.
Right. It started out with just Public Works, but now we ventured out to Fleet. And like I said, we have one person from Parks and Rec, and we've offered it throughout the city, you know, but it just has to flow with our schedule. We want to keep the classes small. We don't want to go over four, maybe five people per class.
Well, I applaud you, and I think the people of this city need to be aware of what we're doing, because we're saving the city money, and we're also keeping our workforce where they should be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. Marshall, I cannot thank you enough for your presentation, and to know that you have opened doors for some people that the doors were closed and might not have had the opportunity to qualify to get a job. And I know retaining and getting a CDL is not easy. I used to have one years ago, when I was working, but I let it go because I wasn't going to pay those high fees and wasn't using it. But I think having it in-house is a great tool, that it gives the people incentive to want to do more and be a part of the city. And I think you'll open it up wherein that you're showing people that you and your department are trying to do everything they can to work, to make the jobs more workable for the people that you hire. And when you hire them, I'm sure you tell them about the options and things that's available to them. So then that encourages them to really want to do more, to be a part of it. So again, I want to thank you all very much for this presentation, and I heard it was coming. And I was glad to hear that you was making the presentation. So, great job, and thanks again, and y'all keep up the good works.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mr. Marshall. I'd like to thank you for putting together such a marvelous program that's needed. We talk about retention when it comes to our employees. This is a way to get them in, to get them certified with their Class As, and not only that, to move up the ladder and to make more money, which enable them to be able to provide for their families. So I applaud you. I applaud your staff. It's a great, great job. We're looking forward to your continued growth. Again, thank you. But I do have one question. From start to finish, what's the timeframe?
It varies. So, it depends upon how we can get everybody scheduled. Sometimes, it, you know, may take two months or three months, but it's all in the scheduling process. And keep in mind, we still got work that we got to get done.
Right.
You know, so we're doing it on Fridays and Saturdays, but sometimes we may have to put it off to accomplish some other tasks. And then the final piece is the DMV scheduling. So we have people now, if you don't mind, I'll ask, the last group, they've been waiting to test for how long? The last two people? A couple weeks. So they're finished the class and everything, but we're waiting. It's been two weeks for them to get into the DMV. So there are variables associated with it.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Hold on one second. Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, Mr. Marshall. That was a great presentation. I think Mr. Lewis mentioned it last Thursday. The only question I think I forgot about, how do we hold them? Another, when they get the license, they just can't go somewhere else, or they got to be in the City of Suffolk?
So there are restrictions that come along with the license that we offer. I didn't include that in the presentation, but we are intrastate, not interstate, which means that there are restrictions. They can't just go out here and just go jump and drive for Schneider or somebody else with the license that we get them. It's an intrastate license that's beneficial. They can go to another municipality, but they just can't go and jump and drive long distance with the license that we give them, or we get them, because we are in intrastate, not interstate, which one of the impacts is, you don't have to have a CDL physical with the license that we get. If you want to go drive over the road in different places like that, there's a certain physical that you have to pass. So we do pretty good by keeping them once we get them their license.
Okay. Mr. Marshall, thank you for your presentation. I think we all know CDL drivers are in short supply. You can hardly get behind a truck where there's not a solicitation to call us. We need drivers. You know, we pay a dollar a mile, or whatever it is. I am absolutely elated about this program, and I commend everyone who took the initiative to make it happen. It's a huge benefit on multiple levels, as you talked about. You know, we talked about cost savings. We talk about lost work time. We talk about employee retention, and all that ultimately is going to improve the ability for us to provide, you know, improved services to our citizens. I did have one question, and I know this program is in its infancy, and you're still going to be tweaking it up, if you will, and perfecting it as it goes on, but possibly, once we are able to accommodate our employees, if this would be something that maybe the school system could piggyback on, if they need CL certifications for bus drivers or truck drivers within the school system?
So, you can only teach to the level of the license that you have. And all of my drivers here, they're Class A, but we don't have the P endorsement for the bus. Anybody that's going to teach to drive buses, they have to have the P, the passenger endorsement. We could definitely look into some bus drivers that have that endorsement and see what it would take to bring them on to assist us in the program with the school buses.
Okay.
Currently, we don't have anybody in our teaching class that has the passenger endorsement.
Well, this is just down the road. I think anytime we have the opportunity to work collectively with the school system, you know, for some cost savings for them also, then down the road, maybe it's something we could take a look.
So I was just informed that the school system is doing it themselves.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, we'll now move on to our next item, which is in regards to our ditch maintenance program. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Director of Public Works are going to provide this presentation. Robert?
Good afternoon. I too have a commercial license I got many years ago, and I'm the same way. I very rarely ever drive a commercial vehicle, but I've determined not to let it go, because it would be extremely difficult to get them back. So again, that's why this program is so important to us. The other topic, we were trying to bring some good news to council tonight, today, through a couple of different presentations. One of the things we're always getting a lot of calls and comments about has to do with the maintenance of the roadside ditches in our city. And for the first number of years, we have been very much a responsive organization. We respond mostly to complaints. We do some work ahead of time, trying to do maintenance. But again, we're generally chasing after issues, and we decided, there's got to be a better way to do business. So we started into embarking on a program, and we have actually created a formal program. We've already kicked off. So what this is, this whole ditch maintenance program is an annual schedule of ditch maintenance. We have a 420-square-mile city, though, so however, we broke the city up, and I'll show you a little bit more about that. It's going to actually take us a 10-year cycle at this point to make it all the way through. But the goal is, in each of these zones, that we would clean every ditch and every outfall ditch that we can get authority to within that zone, until we get all the way through, and then we start over. After we make this first cycle, we certainly hope we can maybe consolidate and do more zones per year, because there's less work to be done once we catch it all up. Council may also elect, they like what they see, and next year, come back and find a way to find some additional revenue, so that we can put some additional personnel and equipment out there. But again, we're trying to kick off a program that we can document to the public as to what we're doing. So what's the goal of this? Well, again, we want to be proactive. We want to be cost-efficient, and we want to meet the needs of our citizens. We want to be very intentional in the way we maintain our systems. We want to improve the condition of these open conveyances. We want to make sure that the stormwater system does convey the water away from our public roadway systems. We want to protect all of our stormwater maintenance infrastructure, such as our BMP ponds. And again, we just want to make the public aware. We hear you. We know you've got concerns. We're trying to get there. One of the other issues we have, though, is sometimes on these outfall ditches, we do not currently have authority to go into those. They're on private property. They may not have an easement over top of it that grants authority to the city. And I'll talk about that just a little bit more in a moment also. But our goal is to try to ultimately get to where we can maintain all of these areas. So what is a ditch? That's an interesting question. A ditch is actually just a man-made channel that's used to convey stormwater, usually vegetated, but sometimes they're lined. Maybe they have asphalt at the bottom of it. Many times, they have concrete in, depending on the slope. But again, it's open. It is not a swamp run. It is not a creek that comes in off the river. That is not a ditch. These are purposeful, man-made conveyance systems. And what is the purpose? The actual purpose of our roadside ditch system is to convey the stormwater away from our public road, to keep them passable, and to prevent flooding on our public roads. One of the side opportunities we get oftentimes is, we also have the opportunity to sometimes convey water away from private property. But again, the primary goal of this conveyance system is to maintain and protect our public infrastructure. And I did, there was a note on that, natural systems, creeks, swamps, so forth like that, is not going to be a part of this, because again, they are is not gonna be a part of this, because again, they are regulated by federal agencies, and there's a lot of extra rules that go on that. So, again, what is a ditch? It accepts and transfers public stormwater from a public road right of way of city property. They must be non-titled. They can't be streams, channelized streams, drainage features, like a swamp. They can't encroach into wetlands, because again, then we get into the federal requirements. They have to demonstrate there's a maintenance need. If you got a ditch out there that is in good shape, there's no need for us to clean something that doesn't need cleaning. And finally, is it adjacent to a roadway or primary next to a sidewalk within our right-of-way or within our easements? So, this is a very key point. It often comes up. The city does not maintain private ditches. And what's an example of a private ditch? Well, it may be an agricultural ditch that comes across a farm field. It may be a backyard ditch that goes through a community, but it does not convey our public stormwater. Oftentimes, these neighborhood locations, these neighborhood ditches are actually covered and maintained by the HOAs. And there's also something called an infall. So, we talk about infall and outfall ditches. An infall ditch is a ditch of private property that's bringing water to our public right-of-way, and outfall ditch is a ditch that's taking public water and carrying it away from our public infrastructure. So, again, we must, either these facilities either have to be within right-of-way that we currently have, or they had to be within an easement that grants us the authority to access and maintain those. But one of the things about those easements, it does not guarantee that we'll maintain them, but it does give us the right to maintain them. And again, the whole point behind this program is the conveyance of stormwater, not does the ditch look pretty. So, what are some of the ways we do that? Occasionally, we have to go in with hand tools to remove sediment, manually rake the debris down, use a shovel, use a hose, again, because that's the only way we can get to it. But we oftentimes use mechanical excavation. We have machinery that fits on tractors where we auger that material out and place it on the bank adjacent to that. We do have a few pieces of equipment where we auger it up into a dump truck and can take it away. But even once that's done, we try to make sure we clean it up. We pick up any trash that's come out with the debris that's got blown out of the ditch. We rake down that sediment. We go back and try to establish it. We put seeding on it to, again, reestablish it. And we try, again, to make sure we're not creating an issue on the private property behind us where we're blocking water from getting to that ditch if it were so applicable to come that way. So, again, driveway ditch, driveway pipes. And again, a lot of this is really applicable out in areas where we, our agricultural, less more rural areas, where we have driveway pipes and open ditches. Again, we clean a ditch. We don't just ignore the pipe. We come in there, we try to clean those pipes out. Sometimes, again, that may be with a shovel and man down his hands and knees, and sometimes that's with a piece of mechanical equipment where we can blow that material out or suck it out with a piece of machinery. So, again, our whole point is to keep the entire conveyance system open and operating. Beaver dams, it's kinda interesting. When I was a kid, we didn't know what a beaver was. We seen them in books or something. We didn't have beavers around here. Well, beavers have, like a lot of other animals, have made a strong comeback, and they're everywhere, all over our city. Long as beavers on private property and they're not impacting drainage on public right-of-way, we don't have any issues. But we have a number of places where beavers come in, and they're like us. They're a little bit lazy sometimes. They say, hey, I can block these two pipes up coming under this road and convey a pond behind it without having to build a big dam. All of a sudden, then, what does that do? It creates a flooding situation on our roadway, and we have to deal with that. And in that case, we do have those dams breached. We'll try that a couple of times. If we're not successful in encouraging the beavers to move on and maybe find somewhere else to live, we do have other methods where we can bring a trap in, and we actually have those removed, again, to prevent the flooding of our roads. So, again, what do we do after that? We certainly, as we get done, we try to reestablish vegetation, both on the backside of the ditch and the front side of the ditch, if we disturb it. We wanna make sure we leave it in a better condition than we find it. We also wanna leave it where hopefully that sediment will not move back into the ditch we just cleaned. But our activities generally are limited to just the minimum necessary in order to restore the flow and capacity of these ditches. We're not gonna make a ditch bigger. We're not gonna make a ditch deeper. We're just generally gonna maintain what's there. So, again, I spoke of, we've taken the city and we've worked with a consultant. We've actually divided our city into 20 zones, and our goal is to do two of these zones per year over a 10-year period till we get them all done. Currently, we're working on zones one and 12, one in the northern end, one on the southern end. We're not necessarily gonna go numerical order. Next year, it may be five and 13 or something, or five and 15. Again, we're trying to bounce around so that we give equitable service to our entire city. So, what do those zones look like? There's a map. Again, we took our maintenance zones that we already had, and then we subdivided them. But the whole goal in the division of these smaller zones is, we tried to make sure each zone was equal as far as the amount of ditching and pipes that needed to be cleaned out. So, again, it was realistic. We could accomplish these zones within the time and the budget we have for a given year. And with that, certainly, I think I could've probably picked a better day, since it's pouring down rain, to talk about ditching, but I'm certainly open to any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Counsel, questions or comments? Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I just have a couple of questions. So, you're, I know you've been reactive instead of proactive, and I think this is a fabulous change of maintenance. So, kudos to you for coming up with this plan. I think it'll be great. When you're doing the ditch maintenance around the city, what's the normal interval? Like, how often is it? Every five years? Every 15 years? I mean, how often do you typically clean out a ditch?
I would have to tell you, at this point in time, it kinda varies on the needs. So, some ditches, we clean them, and less than six months later, we've got an issue again, and we've gotta go back and redo them. Some of these ditches probably haven't been touched since we took over the roadway maintenance. Again, some of them in front of homes, some of them right in the middle of woodsland, so again, it's less critical.
Yep.
So, there's no real schedule at this point, and that's part of what we're trying to do, get a definitive schedule that we can hang our hats on. This is a process and timeframe we're working in.
Okay. Great. So, then, I'm gonna just assume that the idea is maybe every 10 years, if we're on a 10-year?
Again, I'll be honest, I'm kinda hoping, when you guys see this for a year, you say, this is a wonderful program. What do we need? And we find a way to bring some additional resources. So, rather than two zones, maybe we can do three zones or four zones, and go from a 10-year cycle down to a six-year cycle, or maybe even a five-year cycle.
Yeah. Great. That sounds good. And again, kudos to just the fact that you've, you know, just kind of like the CDL program, you know, here's something that's kind of an issue, how can we fix it in-house? And I think that's great. So, kudos to you for that. My other question is, what if you have a ditch that has standing water in it? Because I get calls about this sort of thing all the time. So, the ditch, you know, ditch is cleaned out, but you've got sections of it where the water sits and stagnates, and it's, you know, this goes on during the year, and of course, mosquitoes become a problem and so forth. Is there any different treatment of those situations than just regular maintenance?
So, we do try to look at every concern, every complaint on an individual basis. Sometimes, we find that there is something blocked. Like, I looked at a spot yesterday, and we've discovered a gentleman had been on an outfall ditch back up in the woods, and just decided he didn't wanna ditch on his property anymore. He filled it up with debris and blocked everything up. It was flooding the neighborhood. It was flooding the streets. Kinda knocked on the door, had a conversation. I hope he went out late yesterday afternoon like he said he was, took his loader and kinda opened the ditch back up. Sometimes, we find it's just trash and debris has got caught up in the driveway pipe. So, you'll see a whole bunch of water ponded up down the road in one direction, and the ditch on the other direction is dry. Again, we try to get at it and deal with those as quickly as we can. Certainly, in the wintertime, when the weather gets warm, standing water is an issue. We certainly keep our mosquito control division involved in that. They're always testing, and maybe we go out and do some treating, treatment while we're trying to get, figure out what we're gonna do. Again, some of these, it takes a lot of engineering. We've literally gotta go out there and take a transit and do, shoot some grades and figure out, can we make that water drain? And if so, where is it supposed to go?
Right.
Sometimes it's not, sometimes it's very evident, sometimes it's not as evident.
Right. Right. Yeah. Yeah. And like you said today, we have some interesting drainage things going on at the farm today, just with three inches or whatever we got. One last thing, just, and then I'll turn it over to somebody else. So, will people, will citizens still have the ability to call in and say, we've got a situation here that won't, you know, isn't a part of the standard rotation? They can still call and ask for assistance with a particular problem?
Yes, ma'am. We are not walking away from trying to be reactive from serious problems. But again, we also want to put on that a more systematic program of how to also maintain and go forward.
Great.
So, again, we're not stopping doing one to do the other. We're gonna try to continue with doing both as the need may arise.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, great program. I think eventually, it'll settle down some of these issues we get from time to time about these ditches. In your zones, is somebody evaluating if you're gonna do a particular zone? Do they go out and look and see in that zone which may be the worst of the ditches that really need to be done first? And then, make that evaluation so that those can be cleaned up if, if, if that's possible?
Certainly, within a zone, if we have an identified area we know is probably the worst of the worst, we'll try to get that first. The only thing I'll tell you is, we're gonna try not to just hopscotch all over a zone. We want, if we get started in an area, my goal is to clean an entire street as we go so that we move to the next. And we're very systematic in getting it all done, so we don't miss anything. But yes, if there's specific spots we need to hit faster than others, we'll certainly do our best to get there.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be a great program as you keep moving forward with it. Looking forward to seeing what the results are and if it, how it's helping us in some of these areas, because, boy, we get some, I know I get some just in the driver village, because nothing drains. Everything sits right in the middle of King's Highway, and that gets to be problematic because it drains in a different outfall in that direction over there. But I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you for everything, and we'll see where it goes.
Yes, sir.
If we can help you in the future, maybe we'll get to that point. That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you couldn't have picked a better day, Robert, to bring this presentation. I've been on the phone quite a bit today. Matter of fact, I was in the parking lot talking to somebody before I came in here. And I tried to explain to him about the water, amount of water that has fallen, but still, they said, well, my ditch is running over this and that. So, anyway, the ditch is in Driver, all the way down Nelson Parkway from Rattlewood, all the way into Driver. That's one of the calls I got today from down there by Sportsman Boulevard. And they were really concerned about the amount of water. That water pretty much stands there. And I don't know whether it's because of the off drainage ditches is not taking the water away, and it might be worrying that you don't have an easement to go on that property to open those off drainage ditches or not. But what can we do to try and get easements where we can go and open some of those ditches up?
Okay. So, certainly, one of the things staff has done in the last few days with all of this rain is, we generally try not to just put them out working in the rain, pouring down rain for no reason. I've had them riding, looking, identifying areas that we see that maybe there are blockages we need to address when the water goes down a little bit, and we can get back in there. So, we're doing that. The Village of Driver actually has had a drainage study done over the last couple of years, and we've got a couple of identified projects in there. We're now working through some grant opportunities to try to get some opportunities to fix some drainage in there, put some bigger systems in, and create some outfalls. As in the case in so many places, sometimes, what you gotta do is, you gotta kinda go to where the outlet is, the downhill spot, and work your way back uphill, because if you fix everything uphill and there's nowhere for it to go, you just flood it. So, again, we are working systematically on that. We will investigate all those issues. As far as easements, again, most of the time, what we do, if we get a complaint, the first thing we do, if we have an outfall ditch we need to deal with, we find out who the owner is, and we knock on the door and say, are you willing to just sign this document that grants the city the rights to come in here and clean this up? And one of the things we always tell them, we're gonna leave you better than you were, and we're not gonna damage you. And at the end, hopefully, you're gonna be happy with what we do. So, again, we ask that. The only thing that this program does not do, we are not asking council to grant us any authority. So, if we've asked a person to voluntarily give us the rights to clean a ditch, and they refuse, at this point, I have no further outlook to go forward and force them, short of them creating a major drainage issue flooding our roadway. I might have to go back to city attorney. We may have some prescriptive rights or something in there. But generally, we're looking for voluntary compliance. We're looking to make this better for everybody jointly. So, again, we're gonna ask for those to be granted over. They can be short-term for this one specific time, or they can grant us some authority that kinda goes on perpetuity, so we can manage to continue keeping those open.
I know at one time, you had a drainage blockage down by Gleed Church, and I don't know if that's some of the blockages now that's causing some of the problems out there, but that might be our area.
It may be need to be cleaned again, yes, sir, possibly.
I think the beavers had done some, got in there sometime back, and Sportsman Boulevard and Winterland Forest was having a problem. I haven't heard from them yet, but I know that's where their drainage goes well. My other question is, drainage that goes to the BMPs to neighborhoods that come from the roads, how does that sound?
So, as a general rule, today, stormwater drainage from a street does not go to a neighborhood BMP, except within that neighborhood. And that's part of the agreements the neighborhood has with the city, that that water coming off their, the neighborhood streets goes into their BMP, they treat it and maintain it. Again, don't forget, we've got a program where neighborhoods have an opportunity to transfer those ponds over to the city for perpetual maintenance, and there's some conditions on that we've talked about before. So, again, we try to work with that. There are a few locations where wherever we know our street drainage flows into a BMP pond, it didn't have anything to do with the neighborhood that owns the pond. That really goes back to history. Where was the natural outfall? Where did that stream go before? And did they elect to put a pond on that? So, again, everything is a case-by-case basis, and we certainly look at those and try to manage them as best we can and work with the neighborhoods.
Okay. This is probably my last question. The Lake Forest, Willrow Industrial Park, and all them drains into Bright's Pond.
Correct.
Okay. The homeowners is responsible for that pond, right?
I cannot speak to that with any knowledge.
I'll bring it back.
Okay.
The dam broke sometime back, and they were responsible for redoing the dam. So, I've got a call already to come to the homeowners and meeting about that. That's why I'm bringing this up, is they would complain that, well, the water is coming from Lake Forest, Cedar Lake, and Willrow Industrial Park, but Wood Lake is responsible for the BMP. And they don't think it's right for them to be responsible for the BMP and the water's coming from all the other areas, especially Willrow Industrial Park.
Yes, sir. So, what I would share with you on that is, when that neighborhood was constructed, and I'm going back quite a ways in time there, but when that neighborhood was constructed, the developer at that time elected not to build his own independent BMPs, but to try to utilize that pond that had already been there. That's why today, very rarely do we allow a neighborhood to use an existing pond like that when there's multiple owners, because all of a sudden, you've got one person, one group, putting a lot of water in there, and probably having to take some maintenance responsibility when not everybody else is equal partners to that. There are a few of those still around. Every case is unique in how it was set up years ago. And again, a lot of this stuff, some of this actually goes back and predate some of the stormwater requirements that are in place today, and some of the state law on that. So, again, every one of those are unique. Hill Point is another one of those. Hill Point goes back so many years that a lot of those ponds are being used for stormwater, And it's a real question as to who has responsibility of the dam structures and are they regulated by the state? And if so, what happens if it fails and who's responsible? A lot of that is very much a case-by-case issue.
I'll talk to you later. I want to.
Yes, sir.
We'll talk. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Hey, Robert, where is Pewsville on this? Is this number one? I mean, that's right of way or?
Actually, Vice Mayor, we have been in Pewsville in the last year and cleaned every ditch in Pewsville proper. So we have cleaned every ditch. We have repaved every street in Pewsville, except for one. And the one we haven't done a whole lot on is John Street. Because again, we're hopefully about 30 days away, 60 days away from kicking off a project to completely build a brand-new drainage system in there for that, which will benefit the whole neighborhood. But again, Pewsville has been cleaned. They were actually, they predated this. We've done this over the last two years.
Okay, I want to give you all kudos on the pavement. It looked great. I've been walking through Pewsville and when it rains like this, I got to drive through there to see, you know, we have certain people complain. So I'll be out there tomorrow, see what's going on. I didn't have a chance to go today. But I want to ask this question out, it was for announcements and comments, so you're here now, so I don't have to wait. Okay. Pewsville Road, where we got all this traffic coming now from off Pewsville Road, all them ditches there, both sides of the street. And when I, when I walk in and getting signatures, all they want to talk about is ditches and sidewalks. And I know we're going to do some work with the sidewalks. Now, Pewsville Road from Shoulders Hill to Town Point Road, what can be done? Because they complain, they have no sidewalk. I mean, if you're a neighbor and with that traffic coming, you can't even walk three houses because there's nowhere to walk at. So what can be done with that? Any type of sidewalks? You got that?
Yes, so to be honest, that's, that's one of those locations we probably need some type of CIP because that's a very large extensive project to create the drainage. I'm not sure about the existing right-of-way width. That may only be a 30-foot prescriptive easement. There may be a few spots that have been a little bit of dedication on that. But again, so you'd have to, you'd want to close the drainage, you'd put sidewalks in, you want to widen the road. But again, that's a very large extensive, that's well above and beyond normal maintenance.
So it's, most likely, you might have closed it, the drainage like that?
More than likely to do everything that you've spoken of.
So that's a big, that's a big, okay, because I wanted to know because, like I said, so many cars is coming down Pewsville Road now. It's unbelievable that you see the cars coming and you can't even walk down the side, neither side of that street. So that's something, like I said, some of the new, in the new community, and they just moved here like two or three years. And the first thing when he said, he said, ditches. So, and I was telling, we got, working on that and we got a pond being done and all that type of stuff.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, I'd also share with you, if you go back to the 2035 comprehensive plan, there's actually a proposed road on there, on that set of plans. It's kind of a parallel road to Pewsville that we've had on the plan for a number of years. We've not been successful in getting traction to it. But the thought is to go in and create Pewsville to the level of road it needs to be. We'd probably almost be at everybody's front door. And again, so you're destroying what you're trying to help. So part of the idea was to create a new Pewsville Road that runs parallel, that is not limited, not encumbered by houses and driveways and could be a little higher-capacity roadway and that it goes from Shoulders Hill all the way back to the interstate. But like everything, that's a capital project. We're certainly always looking for funding on all the different levels that we have to try to find a way to put something like that on the books.
Thank you, Al.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Lewis, thank you for delivering yet another good news story from Public Works. It is indeed a daunting task to try to keep up with ditches. We talk about 430 square miles, but I think it's more relative to road miles on both sides. And I can't remember what the number is, but it's a lot to keep up with. And when it comes to fielding citizen concerns in the course of a week or a month or a year, normally ditches show up lots of the time, just simply because of the volume. Now, I do have one question concerning, I guess it would be outfall runoff where water from a roadway is running off into a private residence or piece of property. What is the process? I mean, I know I've dealt with it on numerous occasions and I know Councilmember Butler Barlow has, especially in Chukatack proper. And there seems to be a little bit of confusion as to what the city may or may not be able to do, what we have the latitude to do and what that process is.
So again, every situation is going to be somewhat unique. So one of the first things I always look at is what historically is going on there? Which way has water naturally been flowing for many, many years? So one of the, and I, one of the citizens I was talking to yesterday brought this up. One of the things we forget is Suffolk, we're generally flat. We're not quite as flat as this top right over here, but we're pretty close. There's not a lot of topography in it help us. And, you know, water's going to flow downhill. So, but sometimes there's not a lot of downhill to flow it to. So when you start talking about there, there are a lot of historically natural outfalls that have been in place for many, many years. Some of those are natural, drain streams, those types of things that have been there for years and years. Some of those are actually man-made. Many, many, many years ago, somebody dug a ditch and now that's the outfall that goes off into a piece of property, into a woods or whatever. The water's conveyed through there. Again, state law is constantly changing on drainage. And again, we try to stay on top of that. To give you an exact answer, I can't do that because, again, every situation is just entirely unique as to the circumstances that may go along with that.
Well, I know you've been very diligent over the years in visiting these locations as well as the city manager's been also and taking care of some. And you're exactly right, a lot of this has, a lot of these outfalls have been developed 10s and 20s and 30s and 40s and 50 years ago where somebody decided to dig a ditch between two residences and runs into the woods, goes down the street, maybe goes to a pipe underneath the road and then certain things get blocked up in the meantime. Additional construction happens and there's a lot. So I just want to let you know that I appreciate everything that your department does and your employees do to address the issues to the best of your ability.
Yes, sir. And again, we kind of lose sight sometimes, the fact in this area of the country, people have been living here and farming these areas for probably over 300 years. And as such, as they, as they cleared land, again, they were looking at how do they manage? How do they get the cropped land dry? How do you get the wet? And again, ditches were dug and things, agreements were made between property owners. And all of that has a certain precedent in there. And again, it's, it's hard to change the flow of water. Water's going to go where it wants. And again, we try to work with all those circumstances as best we can on the individual basis.
Okay. Thank you once again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes our work session at this time. We do have a need for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Wetlands Board.
Councilman Fawcett?
Moved to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams.